For the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for staying standing. Please join us in observing a moment of silence to remember Johnny Player, who passed away May 8th, 2025. Johnny was a friendly, familiar face at the Adams Middle School. He served as a custodian for the district for nearly 35 years. Please join us in keeping the Player family in your thoughts.
Thank you, and please be seated. First item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda, which confirmed confirmation of warrant 46-2025, date 5/12/25, and the amount of $70622.79 in money to pay. Approval of minutes: the regular meeting of May 1st, 25, and Budget Subcommittee Meeting of May 7th, 25.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Our next item on our agenda is Student Senate Presentation.
Hello, thank you for having us tonight. We all hope you guys are having a great night. My name is Mantan Dhu, and I am a junior, and I'm president of Student Senate.
Good evening, my name is Thomas Pham, a current junior.
Hi, I'm Avery Galvin, I'm also a current junior.
Hi, my name is Timia Elskardoso, and I'm a sophomore.
Welcome.
So we get this started off with Credit for Life. The Weymouth High School seniors participated in this interactive event to learn more about financial literacy and real-world challenges of managing personal finances. During the event, students visited various booths representing various aspects of a typical household budget, such as housing, transportation, health and wellness, utilities, and entertainment. As they navigated the booths, students gained firsthand experience in balancing their budgets and making informed financial decisions.
On April 5th, the WHS Jazz Band attended the UMass Amherst Jazz Festival. They had an amazing time and are looking forward to attending again next year. On April 2nd, the Tri-M music honor society and the WHS Jazz Band collaborated to host the Jazz Appreciation Month Find Your Spark Event at Chapman, which introduced elementary school students to music education. The event included an instrument petting zoo, followed by performances by the Jazz Band, and a showing of the movie Soul. Also at UMass Jazz Day, juniors Oscar Corner and Joseph Belier received scholarships for UMass's prestigious Jazz in July Summer Program, based on the merit of their individual performances.
For Asian Student Alliance, they hosted an escape room to promote Asian culture and heritage. In addition with it being Asian American Pacific Island a month, they've also been educating students at our school about Asian people who have created great change in our society, and to promote their club and to raise funding, they've also had t-shirts for sale.
Active Minds has been reaching out to students to let them know that their voices will always be heard. Black Student Union participated in the Weymouth High School Diversity Summit this month, where they hosted a discussion-based workshop called You Matter, to reinforce the beauty of differences in understanding identity. Career Tech Education, we're proud to share that two students from Weymouth High School Automotive Technology Program have advanced to the final round of the 2025 Ford Ace Contest, placing our school among the top 10 in Massachusetts. Also, Olivia, one of Weymouth High School's allied health students, was honored at the 39th Annual MAVA Outstanding Vocational Technical Student Awards.
For Grace and Peace, one of our newer clubs here at WHS, they've had a ton of different events in April, as you can see on the slideshow. In addition to that, they've been making sure that everybody in all of their discussions has an equal part to say, and they encourage a discussion of all religions.
Career Student Union also participated in the Weymouth High School Diversity Summit, where they presented two workshops about the LGBTQIA+ community. Both were very informative and promoted stronger connections between Weymouth High School students.
Our Human Rights Coalition here was the group who organized our Diversity Summit, an in-school field trip where our students could learn about equality and inclusion in our schools. With keynote speaker Dr. Tara Parker from UMass Boston, the overall event was a very resounding success, and all of our students had a lot of fun. For Wildcat Word, you can see on the screen that they've updated their website with a lot of different articles regarding student life and society in general. In addition, later on in the slideshow, you'll see what they have done with the seniors regarding their graduation. For Model United Nations, our WHS team, travel team, traveled to Dartmouth College to participate in Dartman, Dartmouth's competition. They distinguished themselves very well regarding political issues and simulating them in a real-world manner. We're very proud of the team for all of their accomplishments this year, and we look forward to seeing what they have in store for next year. Our Scrap Robotics team recently qualified to the World Championship in Houston, Texas. Currently, they're working on several off-season events, with them recently presenting at PAX East in Boston to over 100 people about the world of competitive roboting. We are deeply proud of their achievements.
The step team has participated in the Diversity Summit by teaching students how to step accordingly. Their end performance was the highlight of the summit.
Recently, on April 4th, two juniors, myself and Thomas, participated in Student Government Day at the Massachusetts State House, where we learned about local policy work and how that affected us. We were both also able to get onto the floor to discuss bills and vote on a bill concerning phone usage for youth.
Our amazing theater company presented Edward Jolene this previous month. It was the accumulation of hundreds of hours of hard work by the students, and it was an awe-inspiring performance that reflected their commitment to theater.
Seniors are preparing to start the next chapter of their lives starting next Friday. They are currently selling lawn signs for $25 to support end-of-the-year senior events. Also on the screen, this Wildcat Word asks seniors to give words of advice to their underclassmen peers.
The 2025 Junior Prom was a huge success. The night on April 12th was Great Gatsby-themed, as voted by the 2026 class.
On April 4th, Class of 2027 and 2026 went to Gillette Stadium, receiving a certification of completion for the Peer Leadership Conference, and also earned 15 hours of community service. Class of 2027 had a huge upcoming popcorn fundraiser online. The money they made will go towards future proms and activities for both classes.
The freshman class is currently fundraising through selling popcorn, and they are looking for support from community members.
That should be the end of our slideshow, but if any of you guys have any questions regarding the club activities here at Weymouth, we'd be happy to hear them and elaborate on anything.
Anybody? Kathy?
Thank you all for presenting, thank you. Lots going on, lots of good things. I just have one question on the Human Rights Coalition. It was, you had the keynote speaker, periods four through seven, and you were selling tickets for $4. Where does that money go to?
That money, I believe, goes to the Human Rights Coalition to fund their further club activities and other events such as the Diversity Summit.
Okay, so it's not all those... Human Rights Coalition is separate from all those other groups?
Correct. Human Rights Coalition organized the conference, and all the other clubs, such as Student Senate, for example, we participated in it by presenting our workshops.
Excellent, thank you. How was... Did you go?
I went, yeah, I was one of the presenters.
How was the speaker?
The speaker was great, and we learned a lot.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody, and we hope you have a great night.
Thank you, thanks for coming, guys, really appreciate it. Our next item on our agenda is the report of the superintendent. Superintendent Carton.
Thank you, Chair Nardone. First, I want to send our congratulations out to our post-grad students. They participated in the Deca Life Skills Event at Situate High School yesterday. The team performed a wonderful skit that showcased a variety of their employable skills, such as hostessing, serving, and bussing at a restaurant. They demonstrated employment etiquette, such as workplace manners, active listening, engaging with customers, and also self-advocacy. They took home the trophy for Best Stage Performance, so congratulations to the staff and students of post-grad. And next up, tonight, we are very, very excited to have our Weymouth High School Scrap Robotics Team here tonight. They had a wonderful first year of competition, and we are all extremely proud of them. Some of their competition highlights this year included, New England, at the New England Greater Boston Event, they earned Rookie All-Star Trophy. At the New England Districts, they earned the Rising All-Star Trophy. And at New England First District Championships, they earned Rookie All-Star Award, which gave them an invitation to the World Championships in Texas. They have been invited to the State House on June 5th by Representative Murphy's office. And I also have citations here tonight from Mayor Headland's office. Unfortunately, he couldn't make it, he just had his knee surgery, but I am very privileged to hand out the citations tonight. So I think Ryan, does Ryan... Oh, Brian has them right here. I'll kind of go through some of the names. Brian has a citations. Brian, actually, could I just see the top one? And I'll just read what the citation says. Congratulations, excuse me, congratulations on receiving the New England Rookie All-Star Award at the New England Robotics Championship. On behalf of the residents of Weymouth, I congratulate you on this achievement and acknowledge your hard work, not only as an individual, but as an important member of the Weymouth High School Robotics Team. The first one is Jess Raj Basra. Lincoln Clark. Amaya Cleverso. Mia Gavin. Michael Lincoln. Sean Murphy. Max Nantel. Benson Fan. And Li Yang. We also have citations for advisor Mr. DePray. And the team wouldn't be with the team without the mentors, Nick Kearney. Shannon Murphy. Cameron Moore. And Paige Patz. Congratulations, all of you, and I think we have a little demo, maybe?
Awesome job, awesome job.
I would love to, absolutely. If you want to have the students sit at the table, that would be great. And I did wear pink, it was like, I must have had a feeling tonight to wear the pink.
I didn't get the memo.
Well, first of all, thank you so much to the entire school committee for inviting us here tonight. What an honor it is to receive these awards and to be able to meet all of you face-to-face. Special thanks to Chair Nardone, Superintendent Carton for having us in today, and a special thanks to the administrators, Principal Monahan, and the Department Head of the Sciences, who've worked with me alongside all year to ensure that we had opportunities like this for us to be able to achieve these things. My name is Ryan DePray, I'm the second year in my advisorship, and what a fantastic opportunity it's been. Year one, we focused mainly on rebuilding, rebranding, building membership from zero to 15 at some point, and trying to maintain some of that enthusiasm. We participated in team building, community outreach events, STEM awareness, and things of that nature. Year two, our focus and our goal was to get these students to competition. So it took a lot of hard work and dedication from them, endless hours, reaching out to companies for sponsorship, to make sure that we had enough money to go. The technical expertise that they had to spend their own personal time developing to be able to build the phenomenal robot that we see to the right. I can't say enough about this group of students and the achievements that they have, that they have done this year. So I was hoping for an opportunity for some of them to share what their experience this year has been like, so that you can hear from the students. And then, as Superintendent Carton pointed out, we do have the robot with us, and if it's okay with you, we would love to demo just a little bit about how it works.
That would be amazing.
So I'd like to introduce Mia Gavin.
Hi, I'm Mia Gavin, I'm the spirit captain and social media manager for Scrap 10063. I joined halfway through the year for this amusing team, and the club has definitely given me some opportunities that I never thought I would experience. I have made some great friends and some lifetime memories, and it was such an honor to be a part of the team, and I can't wait to be a part of it next year.
Good evening, my name is Benson Fan, I am the business captain for Scrap Robotics Team, and I want to express my deepest gratitudes for allowing us to be here tonight, because robotics was, the experience was truly transformative to my life, as I was able to connect with some of the coolest people I've met in the world so far. I was able to understand the significance of collaborating with like-minded peers on a shared interest and communicating with other teams to focus on the same issue. And we are always trying to work to promote STEM-related activities and education within our community and communities outside of Weymouth, and we just want to thank all of you for making robotics at Weymouth High School possible.
Hello, my name is Lee, and I'm the graphics lead. When I joined robotics, I wasn't really sure what to expect, and then the season kickoff came, announcing the game and everything we'd be doing that season, and it felt like I was being plunged into a whole new world. Like, the coaches surrounding FRC, which is the name of the competition, was just phenomenal. One thing that especially stood out to me was the concept of co-opetition, which is where you cooperate, but you also compete, and it creates such healthy friendships and rivalries and frenemies, and just so many fun opportunities to learn new things and meet new people. So I'm very grateful I'm able to be part of this club and that Weymouth can have this club.
I love it, I love co-opetition.
Thank you. And before we demo the robot, do you have any specific questions for these students?
Kathy?
I don't have any questions. I'm glad to see robotics is back. You know, it went down, and now, two years in a row, and I'm just so proud of all you students and the advisor, and I know you've worked so hard, and the community has come out and supported you. All your different roles, social media, finance, they've all come together, so I just hope we can build on this, and, you know, you'll get to, get to the Texas next year, maybe.
So tell me a little bit about the materials. They're all donated, there's stuff that you have to purchase. I mean, do you just start with a pile and say, okay, let's make it into something?
I would say that's exactly what we did. Would any of the students over there like to push it a little... Would you like to... I don't know if it's, if it's...
I mean, we don't want any parents missing car parts, like that commercial or anything.
A few catalytic converters in there.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't want to speak for the students, but I think one of the, one of the goals that the team had this year was to raise enough money for parts that were a little bit higher-end to make us more competitive, and that was one of the advantages we had on the field, which were more complicated, not just more expensive, but more difficult to fabricate, put together. And the learning curve that it takes to initiate that, not all teams are capable of putting that on a robot. So kudos to the team for being able to figure that out. You can see from some of the parts, they are donated as construction materials, some of it is recycled. One of our big initiatives is to reuse parts, so that we can demonstrate to other communities that might not have high-end funding, that it is still possible to compete on a high level, like we did this year. Absolutely, it may not look as fancy as some of the other robots out there, but it's highly competitive still. The, I think, the brains behind the design was all the students, so they came together and said, what do we have that we can use here? If we don't have any money, how can we still compete? So the goal was to design something that could achieve the goal of the game scenario while doing it with as little spending as possible. Would you like to show... So Benson, would you mind telling them what the goal was this year for the game? What did we have to build a robot to be able to achieve?
Yeah, so for this season, for FRC, season's name is called ReefScape, which is an aquatic-themed game, which involves three game, three game objectives. And one of the primary objectives that we focus on specifically is being able to intake coral, which is a, like...
Four-inch diameter.
A four-inch diameter PVC pipe, as you can see right there. And our goal is to be able to manipulate that piece and place it onto a coral reef, which is, which has various levels, so it kind of like sticks out. Yeah, we move the elevator up to different heights, and when it's aligned with the coral reef, you can shoot it. And that essentially goes into the stick where the coral reef sticks out. And fun fact, the intake, as you see there, it's actually made from rain gutter, which I believe truly reflects on our team name, Scrap, because it is scrap material, which is pretty cool.
That's awesome.
That is great.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. So is there a different objective to every competition, or do they have a different objective each year?
I believe that each year, the objectives for the games change, so let's see, for the next season, it's not going to be aquatic-themed, right? So because of that, they're not going to have the same game mechanics of being able to move a PVC pipe into a coral reef. We don't know exactly what to expect, which is why we have a build season prior to the competition, starting in March, and actually starts in June, I mean, January, where we brainstorm ideas on what we can design a robot to be in order to actually play the games themselves.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate on that and just highlight how impressive that is. What makes this competition specifically so high-level is that they built this robot in eight weeks. So we don't know what the rules of the game are going to be until January 6th, when everybody in the world learns the rules at the same time, and then it's hit the ground running. And you need to have a robot built to compete before our first event at the end of March. So it really highlights how quickly you have to work, how well you have to work together, and how much time you have to dedicate, because to be able to do that, one hour a day, twice a week, which is the normal club hours, it's impossible. So these guys dedicated more time than that throughout the week, sometimes meeting four or five days a week. On vacations, we found ways to be able to collaborate with other districts, Hingham, Situate, Bridgewater, and a few others that I forget to mention. The community really worked with us to ensure, and that's that co-opetition piece, they want to see us succeed as well. So they worked around the clock for eight weeks straight to be able to get this thing up and running. So while Elon Musk might be building something similar, he has years and millions of dollars to do it.
Right.
But these guys did it in a very short period of time, so it really is an impressive accomplishment.
And I'm sure there was a lot of trial and error, and it wasn't working right, and patience.
Now, the first-matched robot, like, didn't move.
That's what makes it fun, right?
Wow, I'm really impressed, and I'm so proud of all of you guys. Great job, and I can't wait to see what next year brings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that's great, that's amazing, thank you. Thank you so much for coming and sharing. Our next update is on the modulus?
Yes, before that, I just wanted to thank everybody. Brian and I were at Budget Subcommittee of Town Council this Tuesday, so thank you to everybody from school committee that came and from the community. We had a great presentation with back-and-forth questions, so the process is getting there. And then, yes, I am going to turn it over to Brian to give us an update on the modular classrooms.
Thank you, Mel. So Building Mods, not anything like building robots, but I'll give an update nonetheless. So I just want to touch on, because we did talk about Budget Sub, the construction of the seven modular classrooms across the district. So we're adding modular classrooms at Hamilton, three, two at Nash, and two at Wesegusset. And this is in addition to the seven modules we already have across the district at Talbot, Murphy, and Academy that were added close to five years ago. So I'll just touch on funding, the construction timeline, and then the programming of the spaces. So the funding, the town has appropriated just below $4.5 million. The projected cost is just above $4.3 million, so there's a couple hundred thousand dollars in there for contingency. Site work is being done beginning in June 1st. The award, the contractor that won the award was Aries Building Systems, National Company. So as we speak, the seven mods are being constructed in, I think it's Indiana or Ohio, anything west of 495, I just... So they're being constructed now, and the idea is they come in June, they get put in place June, July, and in August, we can start to move in there and be open for September. So timeline in, and budget-wise, everything on time and on budget. The programming of the spaces, so we're keeping with what we've done with the first seven we did five years ago, it's fifth grade. You know, we brought fifth grade back down to the primaries. So fifth grade will go out into the modulators at the three schools. We're adding three classrooms next year, so as we've talked about, we're starting to grow slightly at the primaries. So Hamilton's adding a fifth grade, Nash is adding a kindergarten, and Wes is adding a first grade. And with the other four modules that remain, that allows us to free up some space in those buildings that are very congested right now. So all seven modulators will be filled next year, and again, it's three classes that we're adding to those buildings and frees up some space. So that's where we are right now. We had a Budget Sub the other night, we had a good question-answer period, and we visited Wes in particular on Friday. All of them are connected to the buildings by a canopy, but Wes, Wesegusset's location, based on easements under the ground and just the location of the property, they literally fit in one spot that has a little bit of a sightline issue to get into the building. So we're going to put fencing and put a camera on site, just to, you know, give that extra bit of security. But, you know, the existing pods, we have modules that we have, the teachers love them, you know, they're a great space. We made a modification, the only complaint we've really heard over the last five years was just the storage inside of them, so part of the design that John McLeod's done, and he'll go visit the site, is to add some cabinetry, some, you know, storage space, some counters, and a teacher closet, so... And we're encouraging the staff at the three schools that are getting the new ones to speak with staff at the existing three schools, just to get an idea. to speak with staff at the existing three schools, just to get an idea of what they're all about and how to, you know, program them. They'll have the same alarms, PAs, as the rest of the building does. So it's really, aside from being physically connected, it's part of the building.
And I do have that question, why can't it be physically connected?
It triggers a lot with, with-
With safety code?
Yeah, code, and, you know, if the building's sprinkled or not. So we can't just connect them without doing significant major changes to the building, which could then trigger other things. So Academy is connected, and the other ones are just close enough. But because of the proximity at West Agusset, we thought the best course of action would be just to make, to fence that perimeter in.
Yeah, I understand that. It just seemed like most of the schools were kind of made to have that addition put on. Say, for instance, if you take Nash School, like, those exit doors look like they could add an addition on. I'm just wondering why that we even have, we can't have them butt those doors.
It's really to do with code, fire codes, building codes, that we can't physically attach.
Okay. Awesome. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mel?
That's it, thank you.
Subcommittee report, budget sub, Danielle?
Thank you, Chair. We met on May 7th. We went over the audits and reports the Athletic Director will report out at the next Athletic Subcommittee. We discussed the updates that Brian just discussed about the modular classrooms. We went over contracts and procurement for the CTE press break, the update to the softball and baseball fields. The question about the J C Window ACs was addressed. We touched base on the fiscal year '26 budget planning. We voted on the athletic game coverage, which I think is on the agenda tonight as well, non-union benefits. And we adjourned at 8:06, those meeting minutes will be posted on the website.
Thank you. Collective bargaining, Rebecca's not here, but we do have our first session for collective bargaining cafeteria on Wednesday. Policy sub, Dana?
Yes, the Policy Subcommittee has already had our final meeting of the school year, and we're presenting our second reading of the final edits of the B E D H policy tonight.
Athletic Subcommittee, Mary Ellen and Rebecca are not here. I don't think, do we have one?
We do have a meeting, June 16th.
June 16th is our next meeting. Wellness Committee, Rebecca's, and CPAC, Danielle?
Just a few updates with CPAC. They will hold their annual elections via Zoom on May 20th. We also, they and myself will be assisting with a sensory-friendly space for the eighth-grade dance that will be happening on June 13th. We have some really fun activities for kiddos to do if they are not feeling the dance and they need to kind of come hang out with me for a little while. It will be a great opportunity. We thank Mrs. Stokes, she is letting us borrow her silent disco for that night, which, that's going to be super fun.
That's wonderful. Old Business is our next item on the agenda, which is the Weymouth High School Student Handbook. This is the second reading with Mrs. Monahan and Mrs. Bonner. Hello, ladies.
Hi, everyone. I just want to take a moment to say, just listening to our students, how amazing they are and how proud we are of all the accomplishments they have, both in their academic lives and in their extracurricular lives and-
And the connections they make.
And the students that were here tonight really, really spoke to that, and you could just see the joy in their face. I just want to say that we are always very proud of our students.
So articulate, too.
Yeah, yes, they were. They are. I also do want to recognize that we, and apologize for the blunder that we made in that we did what we're going to talk about, really what we're coming back to, is talk about the attendance buyback and how we didn't do the proper procedures in trying and piloting something, and we won't do that again. So I just wanted to put that out there publicly. So we did, we have two items that we're going to talk about tonight. The questions that were brought forward to us about the approach we were taking on attendance buyback. I believe you got a data sheet that was shared with you, the, for school year '24, '25, the current school year we're in, the number of students that were able to participate in the buyback. One of the questions that was asked at the table last time we were here was, were there any students that had multiple opportunities for that? And we did see, Ms. Bonner did the analysis, that we have five students that did it twice. One student who was term one in three, and then four students, term two and three. The other analysis that Ms. Bonner did, and I'm going to turn it over to her, is she provided two examples of the students that did participate in the buyback.
Thank you. So I just looked at two students, kind of vastly different students. The first student, Student A, at the time had only seven absences all year. Just five of them happened to be during term three. The student is currently ranked in the top 10 of their class. They would have attendance fail term three with those five unexcused absences, which would have brought their grade to a 59%. With the buyback, they were able to bring their grades to what they would have been numerically, and their lowest grade was a 90%. And this is a student who next year is going to have a full course load of mostly AP classes. Student B is, they had five unexcused absences for term one and five unexcused absences for term three. So this is one of the students who did it twice. This was a high-risk student, according to E U S, low income, on an I E P as well. Student was retained their freshman year, so they didn't have enough credits to move on to 10th grade. They did do better in 10th grade, so they were able to be promoted to 11th grade. The student's lowest grade this year was a 65 in Chemistry, which is a pretty difficult course, especially for someone who had struggled prior with academics. Because of the buyback, they earned passing grades in all their major subjects during terms one and three, with a grade of 91% in E L A and 95% in Algebra II, which again is another difficult course that our students take. So that was just two examples of, you know, kind of the high achieving and the struggling student who this buyback has helped this past year.
And we also listed the schools that have attendance buyback policies as well, and to see what they had do for, do they do it for multiple days or just one day? Dedham does it one day a term, Fall River is the same, one day a term. Avon allows two days a term. Ducksbury students can buy back credit lost due to absences through detention and work detail. So those are just some schools that are in, on the South Shore, actually all over, not just the South Shore, that also are trying to approach an issue that they're trying to help support students with.
Do you mind if we have questions at this time on this?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, so Karen. So I appreciate the analysis, because I did have some questions, like was there an uptick? You know, it goes from four to 30 students. That seems like a lot to me, but, you know, I'm not in the school every day. So I appreciate that extra work doing that. So I was reading the addition on page, our handbook that we have now, you know, the policy that's in place. So the second paragraph talks about students may be absent up to four times per quarter. And then down further, we call it a term. So maybe we need to either, it's a term, right? It's a term. In terms, they average about 45 days a term. So four unexcused absences per term. Maybe we should have the language be the same. You get an attendance failure, four per term, so that's 45 days. So let's see if I have any questions. So this obviously, I would assume, but never assume, right Nancy? This doesn't include CTE.
Excludes everything.
It includes all students, even though, all right, so it does include CTE.
Yeah, all students.
All right, that's interesting, okay. What if, I see your updated proposal is seven days in a row going to school. But what if that seventh day or those seven days overlap another term? You know, that's a question that I have. How does that get documented?
So how we, because we had kind of the same thing, we were trying to figure out how this is going to work, is what we did is we treated it almost like an incomplete period, where we give two weeks after a term closes for students if they, you know, have makeup work due, due to absences or whatnot. So what we've done, and we, again, we're trying to figure it out as well, is for terms one through three, they had two weeks after a term closed to complete the buyback. Obviously, term four, we don't have that luxury.
So that was my other question. Term three for our seniors is only three unexcused absences. So, so you would just, so-
Yeah, so it's the same.
So how many, how many days can the senior miss in their fourth? So they can only miss three, so it's cut down, okay.
Correct.
So that adds in for the fourth term. Yeah, so I saw the changes, the seven, seven days in a row. So-
Can we just talk about that? So I know at the table, the question was, why not two weeks? And it did make us think, well, why, why did we pick five? And so we went with seven because there are seven days in our calendar, in our school cycle, in our schedule. So that's how we arrived at seven. So it'd be day A through G.
That makes sense. My only question, I, I'm not, I'm not going to probably support this, but I'm going to, you know, ask questions. And in our policy handbook, right now, we have unexcused absences for class. First offense, teacher will assign consequences and communicate home. Second offense, referral to the dean and office detention will be assigned. Third offense, referral to the dean as well as apparent guardian conference and office detention. Fourth, or more aggressive, assigned an ISS. So if we are doing all these things, the parents will be, you know, I think the comment was made, well, and I understand not going to Disney on April vacation, I understand that. But the parents should know, the students should know the situation, the attendance, the unexcuse.
Those are for class cuts. So like if a student was homesick for two days, we wouldn't assign detention. Those are for class cuts.
Class cuts, but missing classes.
Missing class, like that they're, yeah.
This is a full unexcused, full day.
Full day, right.
It could be, but it could be a student that may come in, come in late. So then it might only be period one and two that they would be, have the expectations that they would have to meet for seven days straight in order to, you know. And the other pieces, this opportunity is only available for students when they get to that fifth unexcused absence. We do have other students that continue to have unexcused absences more than five. This is only helping a small group, a small number of students that are at that five. Anyone else that has more than five, this opportunity to buy back doesn't work for them.
Five per, per term?
Per term.
So that's interesting. So why doesn't, if that, that doesn't, why does that not work for the-
Because we're only allowing them to buy back one.
Right, but if they got to five unexcused absences in a term-
Then they would be offered the buyback.
And if they don't do it?
And if they don't do it, then they-
They get the attendance failure. Which we do, we have had kids not do it.
Okay. So my other comment was on D E S E. For purpose of state reporting, Student Attendance Information Report, Student Information System Collector should only reflect days of attendance and membership considered part of the regular school year, and should not reflect any attendance recovery effort. So that's, it still stays in our, in our, in our report cards, D E S E. And so the way, you know, I just feel there's 1,942 students, you know, attending regularly to school. So, you know, my whole talk, but we're going to the lowest common denominator. Weymouth Public Schools, in my opinion, we stand on our heads to hope, to help students who have attendance issues. We have Adams Academy Q5 and Weymouth Evening High School. I've talked to different people about it, you know, just to get the feel of other folks in town. And, you know, you know, I've always said, the teachers and the students need to be in the classroom every day. That's what we said right in the very beginning, that's how they learn. And if, you know, if they have a sub, that doesn't help the learning as much. And if they miss a day, each class is a specific lesson plan or rubric. So going back and trying to recover the day, they're not really recovering necessarily that lesson. And also, in my opinion, the tracking of this seems more onerous on teachers and our deans. And, you know, one more thing, would that have to be, is that a change in any kind of working conditions? That if someone's going to have to track that student more specifically than they do or already do? And then, to me, we always talk about real-world application. You know, I worked in two industries, no work, no pay. You know, I understand that students have anxiety, but that's why we have all these other opportunities to go to school and to recover their grades. And also, you know, I fought on the program of study for years, but 59%, whether I like it or not, is a passing grade. So I just feel that-
59's not passing.
What?
59's not passing. 60 is passing.
All right, 60, all right, yeah, I'm off by one, all right. No, you got me there, but I just feel, I know the world is different, but do we have to go down this route? And I just don't think it's setting a good example for the rest of the 1,942 students. And you talk about your Student A going to be in AP classes next year. I mean, I don't know the whole story, but, you know, they have to come to school. I mean, that's, our students and our staff have to come to school every day.
Absolutely. And this one had seven absences all year, just five happened in one term.
But it's four unexcused per term. That's 16 quote-unquote "personal" days for 180 days. You know, that is, that's fairly generous for, you know, the child who doesn't, the student who doesn't want to come on that Monday, or, you know, and I get it. But I think we, I think we do a lot to help our students in other ways besides starting a buyback program.
All right, Danielle?
I just have a few questions, and I might be remembering this incorrectly, but contributing factors to excused absences, wouldn't a contributing factor to excusing an absence be somebody that is a high-risk student or that is, has an I E P?
No.
So we wouldn't, well, what if it's a manifestation of the disability, though?
If it was medical?
If there was, they would have a doctor's note, and it would be medical.
If you do not have documentation, but you can prove that it's based on their diagnosis, you, it's not excused.
So again, there would be, whether it be an I E P or a 504, typically our health issues, medical issues will live in a 504. And usually, there's a doctor's note in there, and there could be some accommodations from, on the 504 that talk about attendance, that would come with a doctor's note, that we would excuse those absences, yes.
Right, I guess that's what my confusion is. So why, why wouldn't that be addressed here instead of doing the buyback?
Because a student on an I E P-
Or even any student.
A student on an I E P or a 504, it may not be medically related, where there would be a doctor's note that would excuse the absences.
Okay, I guess my confusion is then why put it here? Why put it in the data if it really doesn't-
Oh, I was just going through the profile of the student.
Just given a different-
If it's not a contributing factor, we don't really need to know about it.
No, we're just trying to give two vastly different students, just to show the-
It doesn't contribute to it, there is really, it's not necessary if it doesn't really, if that's really not a factor into the whole equation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the data. Actually, I guess I'm going to disagree with the rest of the committee. I think this is a really good program and needed, and I think you presented two stark examples of why it's needed and the type of students a buyback could, could help and assist in getting a passing grade for the term. And I will note that it's only used once a year, it's not used four times a year. So it's, we're not exactly giving a pass to all these chronically late people that are coming, oh, not, should I say not coming, more than five times. So I think, yeah, I mean, I think, thanks for the data. I think the data provided clarity, and I felt- I think the data provided clarity, and I felt it kind of backed up the argument that this is actually a good policy. I think you made a fair adjustment going from five days to seven consecutive days. So, yeah, I'm in favor of this policy, but.
So I'm confused, you said only once, but there's.
Once per, yeah, once per year.
So when we, when we were here last time, the question was, how many students had?
Multiple.
Had multiples. So we looked at that, and we do agree that we're, we're going to say that it only can happen once throughout a school year. So you're only eligible if you have five abs, unexcused absences to do the attendance buyback once a school year.
Okay. I'm really on the fence about this. I worry as a boss for accountability. It's, it's making excuses for not getting out of bed. It's making excuses for mom planned a trip to Disney and didn't realize I already had four absences because I didn't feel great, but didn't go to the doctors. I just feel like it's setting the college and the workforce up for an excuse. Like you're giving a pat on the back because now you went seven days in a row. Oh, okay, that, that didn't happen. If you got a speeding ticket and you didn't get one for seven days, they don't erase one of those speeding tickets. I just feel like that's just making an excuse for students to have an excuse. And I agree, one is better than one every term. I am, I'm not convinced, I am concerned about DESI tracking and us doing that. I'm just not convinced that this is a good role model for our students. Don't worry, you can, you can go five days and, you know, I just, I don't know, I just not feeling that that is the standard and the expectation I want of students, yeah.
I think, you know, we're trying to teach, you know, our kids for when, like you say, they're going to be in the workforce. But they still are kids. And as we said, a lot of them are victims of their parents and their schedules and what they do. And so by having them be accountable, especially if we only go with the ones, that they have to be on time, good citizens in school, doing their work for that seven consecutive days, which for many of these kids is very easy to do, but it still puts accountability on them. I have talked to some teachers about, you know, do you think there's been a burden on you? And they say, no, it's, you know, more the kids kind of, you know, just feeling like, ooh, fill this out. But, you know, I think, like I said, we're preparing them for the workforce, and, and there are consequences. But, you know, also at the same time realizing that they are 14 to, you know, 18-year-olds. They're not in there just yet. So trying to, to kind of meld the two of like, you know, we're preparing you, but you're just not there just yet.
But don't you think that there is some sort of accountability on the student and on the parent part? I mean, I understand that if you have a parent and it, maybe it's a single parent and things just get out of the, but aren't they informed that they've, they've had three?
Yes, the communication comes out weekly in an email.
Just want to let you know Johnny's coming close to that.
So at three, they get.
Threshold of five, and he's going to fill that math class. You've got to get him to school on time.
Every week, we send the three. The three, which is the warning, and the five, which is the failure. So that's sent every week by all four deans.
Does the parent have to like?
Sign anything or knowledge it?
Acknowledge that they have to?
No.
And Tracy, if I can just add, working at the high school for a long time, being a dean like Karen and Karen were, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm sure a lot of these students, the students that we are champions for all the time, and then you see them have that one unfortunate incident where they can't get to school. And I think we're all kind of trying to think of our own lives, and, you know, I would just get up out of bed and make sure my son or daughter gets to work. But knowing our population and some of the struggles that our kids have, I, I honestly believe Karen and Karen wouldn't be here, the deans would not recommend this if they thought our kids were taking advantage of it. And I think they would be back next year if they said, wow, you know, we piloted this program and it's gone crazy. Kids are, you know, taking advantage of it, everybody's taking six days off and earning one back. I don't think that's what's happening. And I think they would come back if they, they thought that became the case. I think until you sit in those roles and you work and you pour your heart out for these kids and these families and you understand that many of them at 14 and 15 years old are raising themselves, I think it's hard to kind of judge what they go through and how they truly are supporting our students.
And I do think, I know Kathy, you said, you know, it looks like a huge spike between term, term one with four students and term two with 24 students. I do believe that all of our students come in with the best intentions, right? And you will see that in term one. And although that is anecdotal, that's why it is lower in that term one. And I think term one is shorter, I don't know, I had the days written out. So, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want to judge anybody either. I, I, I know, but, and I know you all work so hard for these students. But to codify this into the handbook, to me, it is going to the common, the lowest denominator. And, and, you know, I don't, I just feel that, you know, we continue to work them. We have all sorts of opportunities, like I said, Adams, Q5, Evening High School. I mean, you know, if you say students are past five and they just take the fail and they don't want to do the buyback, so what happens to those students?
They, they would. They get the attendance failure.
They get the attendance failure.
The 59%.
Right, but so what about their life, their career, their family, they can't graduate?
So a 59 in one term, they can still.
Right, the ship.
Pass for the year. And, and so that, you mean, there is, there is that.
Right.
But there are some kids that have, you know, a good first term, they're trying to make it right. Second term, they start to fall off. You see again, third term, they, you know, here's a new, a new semester, I'm going to be all in. They get there, they may not have that attendance failure in third term, and then they slowly start to slide fourth term. A student could have an attendance failure and still pass for the year. And the attendance failure, when it shows up on the report card as a F asterisk, that means it's a 59. In reality, the actual grade for that student, even though they missed whatever the quantity of days they missed, was actually a passing grade. So in the, and again, I truly believe that students need to be in seats to learn. But there are students that are able to still learn.
Oh, and pass the test.
And still, you know, be able to assess that they have met the standards. But because of their attendance, their grade is dropped to a 59. Now, there are some students that also have attendance failures because they've exceeded the attendance policy for the term, but they have a failing grade. They get that failing grade. So we don't bring their grade up to the 59, they get the, the grade that they earned.
Okay. Yeah, and just like in the case of student A, a 59 factored into their GPA, into their final grade, would be, you know, devastating. I mean, it's devastating for many kids, but, you know, you could have a 61 and brought down to a 59. But, you know, the student's lowest grade being a 90 and going to probably, you know, maybe going to some top-tier colleges, their GPA would, you know, be vastly affected.
So I'm going to offer a compromise, and we can just, we're going to table this till the next meeting anyways, right? So this, this should have been a pilot that we approved last year. And it kind of like, and I appreciate you admitting not doing the right procedure. I mean, I've talked to many students, and I would say out of the 10 or 12 that I talked to, maybe two knew about this program last year, knew about this availability. It didn't concern them anyways because their attendance was fine. But I don't know if that's something that just, just came up with them at the five and they would talk to about, well, this is available. I, I would be in favor of letting this go as a pilot in the proper procedures for the coming school year 25, 26, rather than putting it in our handbook right now. I would be in favor of voting it as a pilot now for this new school year in order to see, we have some data. But I also feel like we would be educating because now everybody's going to know about it. It's going to start the school year, it's going to be well-published, it's going to be well-known, and everybody will know what's available. And then I think the data would be a little more reliable. I'm, I'm not in favor of giving anyone a pass. Show up, you get, you earn it, you get, like Kathy said, you, you show up, you get paid. And so I'm not in favor of, of giving it any easier because you're making my life harder as an employer to make excuses. You're making it harder for those students that go off to college and the paper was due on Friday and, well, you know, you, you can pass it in on Saturday. That's not what the real world is like. So I'm in favor of this only if it were, become a pilot for next year and not in the handbook. That's where I would compromise. So. Any other questions, comments?
I have one question.
Administrative, Kathy?
I had one question.
I'm sure Mary Ann will have questions, but.
So if a senior misses three days in that last term, they don't have the two weeks to make it up?
It would depend on when the absence was, I would say.
When they receive that fourth absence. And you do, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I still, and, you know, to Tracy's point, you know, that's, maybe that's a compromise, but you would, you would need, I don't know if you need more data, but, you know, but thank you for all the conversation.
And, and we really do appreciate the hard work that you guys put in for this. And I know your hearts are in the right place, I really do.
So what, we'll come back for a third reading, is there any more?
Hopefully, the other team will be healthy.
Is there any more information that we can bring to that meeting?
I mean, it might help hearing from a student that it, it made a difference from, or a parent. But other than that, I think, I think you did well with the data analysis.
To my point of, you know, say 500 kids a class, just for easy math, for the 1,942 students that are coming, how do they feel?
I just want to, enrollment is actually 1,655 right now.
All right, well then.
So just, just so that, you know. It would be great if it was 1,900, but it's not.
Okay, 16, what is actually?
It's 1,655.
1,655, that sounds like a great number. It's just, you know, everybody, you know what I'm saying? They come to school every day, and I think we do an outstanding job. And like you've always done your whole career, you shepherd these students, you help them, you have to communicate with the parents. And it's just adding one more thing, you know, for, for a student to be able to roll over on that Monday and, and not come to school. Like, we gave them the hats because they couldn't come to school because they couldn't comb their hair, or something like that, you know?
It's totally against the hats, still am.
So for next time, I don't know, could, if you were going to do a pilot for a year or two, what about putting this in a survey to, to, and get, know the majority of the other students, find out what the students, put it, give it to you. I don't know, I don't know how you would do it.
I, I mean, we have communicated it to all students that there is that opportunity. It has been well-communicated through the deans to their individual classes. It has been, when we meet with them for class meetings, it is, it has been the sheer part of our presentation. You know, we're always reminding all students of the expectations in being in class and, and all of those things. So the, I mean, the communication is there. It's when they're sitting in the seat and realizing, I'm going to have attendance fail now. And if we, if they participate in this with, at the fifth unexcused absence, that might curb that behavior, or it might not curb that behavior. So we're just trying to, you know, build the skills, we're, we're still skill-building. So, and it's just a small percentage of our students that this works for. A lot of our students don't have this issue, so it's just a small piece. There is that, the chronic absenteeism that we have as well, that we haven't figured out how to support some of those students. So it's just trying to find the, the right fit is not the best fit for the, for all. A fit is for a certain cohort of students. So we're just really trying to be creative in how we support our students.
Understandable. Kathy, you have another question?
I remembered my question. So when the student who's going to do a buyback and they have to go to that, they have to go to class every day for seven days, and is it going to be noted in Aspen, or you said, or they're going to hand the teacher? How does that work? Who's going to track?
So how it's worked this year is after they completed, they bring it to our attendance secretary.
After they've completed?
Completed the buyback, the teacher has signed off on the sheet.
Signed off where?
On the sheet, it's a sheet that they carry around with them, that the student is responsible for. So we did try to put a lot of the ownership on the student, they have to go to the teacher, they have to let the teacher know that they're starting it, so the teacher can just be kind of aware. And then after the, if it was seven days, but right now the five days, the teacher signs off that, yes, they did the, the three things that are needed. And then they bring the sheet to our attendance secretary, she then logs it in. It still is an absence, but logs in as buyback, yeah.
Complete days of buyback. So when I meant Karen about the communication, I just wonder how the majority of the students that don't have, have an issue. Would, does it bother them? Do they, do they have an opinion on it? That they go to school every day and the people that don't get all this extra help or, you know, a special codified? That, that's sort of what I meant, you know? I don't know. That's where I go. I go to the majority of the students that, you know, and then, you know, we have always, you know. That was, that's what I was thinking.
I mean, we can certainly, you know, if, if we do this as a pilot again next year, we can certainly do a survey mid-year. As an aside, the Student Senate, who were here tonight, I've, I've been meeting with them, and the deans have been meeting with them the last two Mondays, they did do a student survey. Not something related to this question, but this is something that we could actually ask them to include in their next-year survey, because it was about academics and culture. And so that would probably be a really great place to put that information.
I agree, I agree.
What kind of response do they get?
So they had nine.
Over 800, like 900.
Yeah, 951, I think, was the response rate.
So a little over half, yeah.
Yeah.
Now that I know the right enrollment number.
Can I make a suggestion on that?
Sure.
To do the survey twice, once at the beginning of the year and once at the end? Because I'm sure if a kid has one view at the beginning of the year and then suddenly needs to use that buyback, is going to have a totally different view of it at the end of the year.
Yeah, okay, I agree, yes.
And that would be a great thing, like I said, for the Senate to come to us with it.
Yep.
Awesome. All right, so this is going to be on our third reading at our next school committee meeting, which will be Thursday, June 5. And so our next item is our policy BEDH. Public comments on school committee meetings, second reading. Did I not? Don't scare me. All right, Dana, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chair. So during our first reading, we went over some of the edits and some of the legal notes. And we just talked about reading through the actual policy as we finalized it in the policy subcommittee this, this meeting, and then potentially addressing one issue that Danielle had brought up after we had reviewed the edits. So I'm just going to go through and read the edited policy that we, that we did, top to bottom, I guess. So for the public watching, this is when you look at the public comment section of the agenda, and it says, policy is in accordance with, policy, public comment is in accordance with policy BEDH. This is what we're talking about. So this is the finalized copy of what the subcommittee put together. If you look at, online at the, at the notes, we did also include the edits with this on the agenda as well. But this is the actual finalized copy of what we're proposing. So all regulars, regular and special meetings of the school committee shall be open to the public. Executive sessions will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The school committee desires individuals to attend its meetings so that they may become better acquainted with the operations and programs of our local public schools. In addition, the committee would like the opportunity to hear public comment. Public comment is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's jurisdiction. All remarks will be addressed through the chairperson, and nothing prohibits the chair from responding to any statements made during public comment. and nothing prohibits the chair from responding to any statements made during public comment. To ensure the ability of the school committee to conduct the district's business in an orderly manner, the following procedures are adopted. That is, if this was to pass. One, speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by stating their name, city and town. The presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit in extenuating circumstances. Two, comments and complaints regarding specific school committee, uh, school personnel apart from the superintendent or students are prohibited. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner at the chair of the meeting after a warning reserves the right to terminate speech in which is not constitutionally protected because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of the peace or incite, incitement to imminent lawless conduct. Four written comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. Comments made during public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily reflect the views or positions of the Weymouth School Committee. Five, as this is a public business meeting, the school committee, the chairperson is, the school committee, of the school committee, the chairperson is ultimately responsible for ensuring the policies of the school committee are being followed during public meetings and that the committee is following the agenda. In addition, we added a cross, a new cross-reference, which is a B E D B agenda format. And that just is a section that tells people if they wanted to get something on, on the agenda, that addresses how they would do that rather than trying to do that through public comment. Which at this point, we can open it for comments and discussions.
Any questions or comments? Any in the public?
I, sorry. I am still concerned about the, the term specific school personnel or students just because that's very subjective with what I think is specific and when somebody else is, isn't. It's again, how our subs, special education programs are, are program, are structured. You don't really need to be specific to identify someone that's in those programs because there is a very limited amount of teachers and students in those programs. So it just does concern me.
So would you take out specific and just put any?
I would take out specific, yeah.
Like comments or complaints regarding any?
I'm trying to think if that was a word that Colby added, added to it.
Specific. Because we were trying to like really avoid.
I don't know the answer, I'm just, I'm just, it just.
Just in our old policy, it says general, generally.
Generally, yeah.
And I wonder if you just say, I mean, then you're taking away the ability to, you could say comments and complaints regarding any students. Right, so I mean, you shouldn't be up here talking about any students anyways, so.
So we change specific to any?
But sometimes the parents do sort of, they've come up to us in the past and they want, so.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, they have.
Ultimately.
Yeah, they've talked about their own children.
Yeah, their own children, yeah.
Which that, for sure, but I, I think it's, it's when, it's a negative comment that is, is the issue because that has happened in the past. I don't know the answer, I just, it just concerns me. I just don't, I knew the family it happened to, it was very traumatic.
And I think that's something we were trying to address in our wording of it as well. Because we were concerned about the general.
It's almost like being alert and anytime someone's speaking that, like to kind of stop that.
But it's kind of like what we gave the chair the power to.
Because that person probably isn't reading the policy anyways.
Chair ultimately has the power to end it.
To just stop if they look like they're going down that road. And I have no problem kind of being on that alert as well. If I feel like someone's talking about a specific classroom or a staff member that might identify somebody. I think we just have to be maybe alert for that.
Unless it's, yeah.
Yeah.
If it's not there, yeah.
Right.
Because I think they, they're probably not going to read the policy and understand what they're doing anyways.
Yeah.
Because I feel like it was specific school personnel and students, like that would be specific and specific, but because it says or, it's specific personnel or students in general.
Right, in general, unless it's the parents. We've got a couple of parents come up to speak to a specific, their own specific kid, you know? And they wanted to. I don't know. So would that prevent a parent from coming up and talking about their own child? I don't know. We generally don't, yeah, I don't know.
Well, it says complaints, I guess if you.
Comments and complaints.
Do you want to put this on for a third reading and iron that out?
Yeah, we have like, is it, is it three weeks till the next meeting? Two weeks?
June 5th.
Yeah, is it? So.
Can you, can you maybe look into if that was Colby? Yeah, if Colby.
Yeah, I think she thought that this was the most protective that we could do.
Yeah, I think she thought, we talked about it, I think that was, she thought that was the way to.
Like you can't get any more specific other than like stopping it actually while it's happening, I think.
Short of actually.
Yeah, two weeks.
You know.
Yeah.
Just not let them speak at all, period.
Right.
Which is unconstitutional, so.
Right, well, that, that's, yeah, we're bordering on shutting someone down.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Let's open it up to the public. Does anybody have any comment on this? Stampede. All right, we'll put it on for third.
Anybody on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom?
So just to, for the record, Tracy, if you want to go back.
Yes, I will.
About the.
I will.
Handbook policy, we didn't do.
I promise.
Okay.
All right, so we'll put this on for third reading.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, and we're just going to go back to the Weymouth High School student handbook. So this is second reading and we are going to open it up to the public if they have any comments about or questions about the handbook. Anyone on Zoom? All right. You did?
Is that including the buyback?
Yes, that's part of it.
Anything that we talked about during?
Yeah. Do you want to go first?
Yeah, I just want to.
Just come up to the table? Thank you. And just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Kimberly Ferreira, 105 Charles Dirce Street. Just go, I wasn't reading our cues and we were moving on very well. Going back to the public comment policy. So say we have, we have a teacher say very specifically where they work, very specifically they, the program, and then state an issue they've had. Paying very little attention, you could very easily expose a diagnosis to, of that student. Parents love to fish for information. They want to know everything that's going on in their buildings and I respect that and I understand that. But you know, we are, the wording can protect the school very easily if we tighten it up a little bit because we don't want to be revealing diagnoses because that might impact a kid at seven differently at 17. And then that label has been placed on them and it's going to carry with them in the images of how other families perceive them and also how other staff will see them as they move up through the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
But it says not specific, I.
But if they're not, they, they believe they're not being specific by not saying the name, but they are.
Oh, I see.
They really wouldn't.
Yeah, if you say, I work with a child, then everybody knows the child you work with.
It's also the way it's structured, there's not a lot of kids or teachers in those programs so you could really identify.
You just have to be really careful with staff.
I misunderstood your comment, Kim. I thought you said if they identify specific teachers, because, but it says.
Like if I say, like, you know, my name's Kimberly and I am.
Nobody can hear you.
Yeah, you gotta.
You gotta come back up.
Thanks, Kim. Do you want my address again?
No.
So say I say, okay, my name's Kim and I work at Hunt Elementary School because we're, you know, I don't want to put a label on anyone.
Hunt, good one.
And I am, and you know, I'm a speech therapist. So like, well, that just narrowed down, like the student I could be talking about significantly.
Yeah.
Especially there, our elementary schools are not that big. We have two classes per grade typically. I know we're growing into three in some.
Yeah.
But it's, it's a very, I, I've said this exact statement before in public comment, but we are a city, but we are a very small community. So it's very easy to.
Figure it out.
Reveal something about someone with no ill intent.
Without names, yeah.
But it's just having some precautions. Whether people adhere to them or not, it's like we, we, that gives us a policy to fall back on.
I, I misunderstood what you said in the beginnings because, so. But this, yeah, this is up on the website. So if you wanted to, duh, 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 you know, send some stuff in.
Suggestions, we would love it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
Thanks, Kim.
Ashley, did you want to come up?
Ashley Dickman, 846 Pleasant Street. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the buyback policy. Just a suggestion to maybe, I don't know if they've brought the policy to their school council yet to discuss. Because like that would be a great place to bring that up as far as getting information about how people, different stakeholders feel about that policy. And also if you were collecting data, so I see what, I, I, I was trying to kind of like hear different perspectives. And I hear what, what administration was saying about like, it's supposed to be used like, kind of in a pinch. But the concern would be it kind of catching on and students start abusing the new policy and it kind of sets this precedent where students who wouldn't normally be out are now out. So if you were going to collect that data, you would almost need to look at the attendance before they pilot the program. Like if they've already done it this year, I don't know if that would like necessarily count as a control, but you would also need to look, you would kind of need to look at the data before they do the buyback and then look at the data after they do the pilot. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So yeah, that was just an interesting, interesting discussion there. Just some ideas as far as collecting data goes. And also when it comes to the modulars, I was wondering, have you guys had any chances to kind of reach out to those individual schools and kind of talk to the parents and hear their concerns? Or?
Yeah, we've talked, so the existing buildings?
Um, yeah, so the, the new module, modulars that are coming to Hamilton, Nash and West, have you had a chance to kind of like sit with each school and kind of do like a question and answer, so to speak?
I haven't sat directly, but the principals, I mean, they've been aware for this over a year now. So they've been talking with their parent councils, their families. And we've been received, I've been receiving through principals questions from both staff and families.
Okay, I, yeah, I just want to.
Yep.
This was also, it was also part of the Adams forms when we talked about what the, what the plans were going to be that we were going to go forward with.
Okay, yeah.
And that was a, that was a parent form.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't know, I didn't know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so Kathy?
Point of information or something. Through you, Chair, to Mel, Karen asked us if there's anything else she can do for the next third reading. That would be a good question. We've got three weeks if she brought it to her school council.
School council, sure.
The attendance buyback. That was a great point, thanks, Ashley.
All right, so we're going to close that and we'll go to policy for the third reading and handbook for third reading.
Right, next meeting, yeah.
So now we're going to go to the superintendent's goal and focus indicators. This is also an action item tonight.
Thanks, Tracy, I did make that adjustment. Kathy, you had mentioned the last meeting, the balanced budget didn't really sound right. So, so I did change it to the sustainable, right, creating, yeah.
I like that too.
You got it.
Thank you. So I will take a motion if anybody wants to throw me a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the superintendent's goals and focus indicators for superintendent review.
I second that motion.
Any questions, comments or concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So passes. We have that out of the way. Let's see, new business, FY '26 fees, substitutes, E S Y and athletic event coverage rates. This is an action item.
Thank you, Chair.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Chair. So as Danielle mentioned earlier, budget sub, we've gone through all of these rates during the budget season. We're looking for action on these items. I'll just briefly go through each. So FY '26 fees, we're looking to a blanket across all fees with the exception of athletics and the high school dues, a 5% increase. We expect that that will yield around $100,000 plus that we've helped use to balance our budget for next year. Also our substitute rates and E S Y extended school year rates. Those are looking at increases of approximately 2.5%. And then the final item is the athletic events coverage rates. These rates have been in existence with the exception of the athletic trainer, athletic trainer per diem, which was added this year. The rates have been in existence, they were just not memorialized in a document for school committee, which we have done. And in addition to that, at the next athletic subcommittee, meeting, the procedures will be shared on the implementation, how we do the proposed game worker rates. So those are the items that we're looking for action on tonight.
Anybody?
Thank you, through you, Brian. I, I haven't been making the budget sub meetings and I did ask Danielle a couple of questions this morning, when we came in. But the other fees down the bottom, charging stations.
Yep.
It's with, with the energy increasing, why we, did we not increase that? Is that controlled by somebody else, the 150 kilowatt per hour? Charging stations.
So through the, through the platform that we use, we don't see an increase. So that, that rate will cover at least the cost. That rate will cover at least the cost. Like we always do, we'll review the rates and if we saw something dramatically increased, we could always bring it back to the committee during the year to.
All right, because that was the only one that didn't increase.
We do these, we do these increases once a year, but obviously if something drastic came up, we would bring it back earlier.
Thank you, that was easy, yeah.
That's a good question, thank you.
So I take a motion to. Anybody?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion that we approve the FY '26 fees, substitutes, E S Y and athletic coverage rates for the year 2026.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 So passes. Next one is the non-union benefits. This is also a action item.
Thank you, Chair, I'll jump into this one as well. So non-union benefits, I want to thank HR Director Berman, who's here tonight. So we've gone through this at budget subcommittee several times. And what we're looking for is for an implementation date of July 1, some changes to the non-union benefits. It's really, the work we did was to align, we have a, a Unit D contract that now has pulled some of the members from this into the, the union. So we just want to make sure that everything is in line when it comes to our non-union members. So we've made those changes. We've taken out of the roles on this sheet, roles that are no longer falling under non-union and they're falling within that Unit D contract. And we made some other changes that we talked about in the budget subcommittee meeting.
Any questions, comments or concerns? I will ask for, what am I doing? Non-union.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the non-union benefits starting July 1, 2025.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So passes, thank you. The next is the report of the W E A, W P S, Health and Safety, J L M C, with Assistant Superintendent Smith, with Mrs. Conti and Mr. Berman.
Thank you. So I'll introduce and just briefly talk and then let Tina do all the talking. So I want to thank Tina Conti, my co-chair, director, HR Director Berman, and also Dana, who's part of our committee, has been a great contributor to the meeting. So in accordance with Article 16, subsection J of the Unit A Collective Bargaining Agreement, the district formed a health and safety committee. This was led by Tina Conti and myself and composed of a number of administrators and members of the W E A. The work's been, we've done a lot of work, it's important work. It's been great collaboration, so I just want to name the members quickly if I, if I may. So in addition to ourselves, Shari Anizzi, Jeanne Rousseau, Kerry Contrino, Hyke Tupling, Jackie Thompson, Jeanne McDermott, Katie Montero, Mark Kowalski for W E A. And then for administration, Principal Higgins, Principal Costello, Principal Monahan. And we've actually added, and he'll participate more next year, Dennis Jones, just from that safety component in terms of Alice topics that we might discuss. So this letter is to the superintendent, the school committee and the W A leadership. And per the collective bargaining agreement, we're asking that you accept this annual report of the H S C. And I'll turn it over to Tina to go over some of the details of the report.
Well, hi. Thanks for having us. It was really some important work that we've done this year on our committee. And I just want to add a couple of things relative to our construction of our committee. In addition to the collective bargaining agreement with Unit D, the J L M C was to be formed for a health and safety committee with them. It was agreed to bring this unit into our committee to facilitate strong discussions in relative to the safety and support of our staff. in relative to the safety and support of our staff. This expanded the committee's purview, which made our work more relevant and timely across the district. The committee also expanded to incorporate staff that can bring their expertise to our work, like Dennis. So we are growing as a committee, we are becoming more overseeing, we're taking on more responsibility, and I applaud our growth and the fact that we have a lot of really, really fine people on our committee, doing a lot of work. Included in our report, you can see an extensive action item list, which documents the issues, actions, and personal responsibilities. The list is mostly completed except for a few items that are ongoing and need to be brought forward. It does allow every person on the committee to view the action items, to access the action items, and it allows the accountability and transparency that we need to see when we do our work. So relative to staff safety, just going to touch on this quickly, we discussed a lot of issues around staff safety, specifically staff injuries involving student behaviors, communication to staff around the staff's administration was taking to assist in this matters. WEA, myself, we shared some information about the MTA Initiative for Safe Schools. I'm on the Safe Schools for All Task Force with the MTA, and I'm very pleased to be able to bring in some information and tools that we can use to help us do what we need to do to make sure that our district is one of the front runners right now, I do believe we're one of the front runners. That we work with DSL, with this, with the task force, and that's the Department of Safety and Labor, and it's very important that we keep these open communications with the state. Let's see. We have addressed a variety of ways to gather information relative to the staff, administrators, and students, discussing ways that we can improve our staffing. We do understand that there is a financial crisis across the country relative to Department of Education and that there's, could be funding issues coming down the road, and we are trying to fortify ourselves relative to that, but we do need to understand that staffing is probably the primary way we can keep everybody safe within our buildings. Okay, so. So that we believe that working with the staff safety and working with the recommendations that we have put forth in the, oh, I have to do these other areas, don't I? I've been sitting there too long tonight.
You don't have.
I've just been sitting there like.
They have it, Tina.
You have it, okay.
Yep, we have it.
Yeah, so further, the summary of our top priorities was the safety care de-escalation training. Okay, we've made some inroads on that, but we do have some more work we need to do, and I've got to say that we're working really well together, that we have been really functional in getting everybody taken care of, but we do have more work to do. We need to increase the visibility of members and clarify the roles of our crisis teams to all staff in buildings. Some buildings do a great job, other buildings are not so great, but we want to develop policy, well, procedures across the district. So every building, every staff member, every educator gets the access to the information that they need. And we also need to focus on debriefing trainings after the fact relative to the situation itself, or relative to how the staff member is, or relative to how the student is, or relative to the, the situation within the building and with staff. Debriefing is one of the things that is recommended by safety care, and we need to focus more on that, so that will be coming up next year also. Dennis Jones is going to be working with us relative to the bigger picture safety issues that we, we're not really dealing, but we need to get the training out there. Professional development and training, we're doing building level PD for classroom management and tier-two supports. And orientation and training of new hires, we're working on a database for training new hires. Mr. Birm has actually worked on a document that will allow new employees to come in and access like, like a set protocol, like not just here's your questions and what you can do, but these are the things that you can do in your first day, your second day. We're talking about shadowing and mentoring and, and things that will help new staff to feel better and to feel safer in the building, so that is ongoing, but we've made really good steps towards that. And we did address issues with calming spaces at Hamilton and West Augustus, I want to say that that was a success. We, Mr. Smith, managed quite nicely to bring in the materials and the staff and what we needed to do to make the students safe. That was one of our major priorities this year. We're very proud of our positive synergy that we've been developing within our committee. This is resulting in strong cooperative work, that we can only benefit everyone in the district, students, staff, educators, parents, families. We look forward to working together again next year, we look forward to expanding our purview and bring more health and safety improvements to our district as a team. Thank you for listening and thank you for taking our report.
Thank you, Tina.
I love the format.
Anything to add, Jerry?
The format's easy to.
Not a lot, if there's any questions, I guess the only thing I'll just say is up in part of the committee in the past in different capacities, different roles, and coming in as Director of Human Resources, just thinking about our employees and their well-being and certainly all of the aspects of our school system, but coming in with that lens, I, I think it's a really healthy committee, I think we've got a wide representation of, of members on that committee that kind of touch on a lot of areas with different expertise, different grade levels, so they're bringing ideas, they're bringing a, I guess, a realization and an understanding of some of the challenges that we're dealing with, so it's, it's a great forum to kind of hear those things, and, and the conversations have been fantastic, so we've had some really good conversations, we've had some, we've done some great work, I think, and there's some good ideas that we've started and will continue to work on, to I think improve the working conditions for everybody.
And we like Dana.
Yeah. Thank you. So, thank you.
I do have one question.
Kathy, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, this is so important, like you said, Tina, for staff and students, for everybody. I do have one question on, on your list, because this has been a bugaboo of mine for a while. Second page, the red dot, red, green cards, remember years ago, we put the red dots?
Always know the right question to ask.
And I say, like, the fire department doesn't know about the red dot, so, so it's, it doesn't have an outcome, it says red dots and red, green, and cards, safe haven rooms, do we still use, do the emergency services know about them? I could have asked that question, that's an awesome question.
So we talked a lot about that, so there's two pieces to it, there's the, what's on the windows, and all the buildings agree that buildings have their protocols, fire departments well aware of all our protocols, so those, they exist, but they're not being, they're not part of the protocols. What is part of the protocols that you mentioned was that red and green dot at the high school you, just because of sheer size of it, I don't know if Chapman as well has the same protocol, but.
We have red and green forms.
Forms, yes.
Papers.
They're cards.
Yeah, but like on the windows.
So there's two, right.
We don't have any, we don't have anything on.
No, so there's two separate, in, in that one item that we discussed in, in detail, there's the window dots, you know, they, they remain, it's, some of them are, we're easily able to get off, but others we can't get off, but they're not part of our protocols.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
They're not part of our protocols.
Okay.
But there are red and green dots that are part of the protocols that Tina just referenced, but that's not what you see on.
Okay, all right. As long as everybody knows.
That's part of our communication with the fire and the police.
Yeah.
Where Dennis is playing a huge part with being the liaison with them and, and bringing everybody in, so everybody is at a, at the same level when a situation occurs.
Right, yes.
Good question, though.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Can I ask, for the calming spaces, could we set up a time that CPAC could come in and see those calming spaces so they could have some input on, on those?
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Awesome, great, I love the format, it's wonderful to read.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying so late, Tina.
Thanks, Tina, good job.
At this time, we'll open up the public, for public comment, and public comment shall be in accordance with policy BEDG, BEDH. Anyone on Zoom? All right, moving on to announcements, the first announcement I have, if everybody would help me wish my mom an 87th year young birthday, today is her 87th birthday. Additionally, and she worked in the Weymouth Public Schools for 100 million years. We have upcoming meetings, we have the Weymouth Annual Town Meeting on Monday, the May 19th at 7:30 in the council chambers at Town Hall. CPAC has a meeting May 20th, 2025, at 7:00 PM via Zoom. Townwide Parent Council has one on May 20th, which is at 7:00 PM, right here in the high school. Budget Subcommittee meets June 4th at 6:00 PM in the Adams Library. Athletic Subcommittee meeting is June 16th, 3:00 PM at the Adams Library. And we also have the Weymouth Evening High School Graduation this Monday on the 19th at 6:30. We have Weymouth School, Weymouth High School Spring Concert and Art Show on May 21st at 6:30 at the Weymouth High School. We have the Memorial Garden Ceremony, which is May 29th at 3:45 PM at the Chapman Middle School. And then we have kindergarten, Here We, Here I Come, on May 29th, 5:00 PM at the Weymouth Early Childhood Center, and graduation for the class of 2025 on June 7th at 10:00 AM at the Weymouth High School, and hopefully the weather will be gorgeous and it'll be outside. Our next meeting is May, is Thursday, June 5th at 7:00 PM, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Chair, I make a motion that we adjourn?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, everybody have a nice, wonderful evening, hopefully it didn't rain again.